Hey, we're going to begin the Vermillion School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, Monday, December 12th, 2022. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Call the whole place?
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Habermann?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Step?
Here.
Board members present.
Next we have a question, please. So if I can have a student forward your lines from the rear. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have each one come up to the mic, they're going to say the name, their teacher, and what they want to do, they go off, and then they'll stand in front of the work table here to say the questions. All right? Go ahead.
My name is Audrey, and when I want to grow up, I want to be a nurse.
My name is scientist. I want to be a dentist, and my teacher is Mrs. Butlerman.
My name is Trinity, and when I grow up, I want to be a teacher, and my teacher is Miss
My name is James, and when I grow up, I want to be a doctor, and my teacher is Mrs. Becker.
My name is Jimmy, and when I grow up, I want to be a researcher. And my teacher's name is Mrs. Long.
My name is Josie. When I grow up, I want to be a vet, and my teacher is Mrs. Cut.
Thomas.
Hello, my, my name is Christensen, and when I grow up, I want to be a scientist. My teacher is Mrs. Thomas.
My name is Noi, and when I grow up, I want to be a bus driver, and my teacher is Mrs. McCrory.
My name is Brayley, and I'm going to be a plumber when I grow up, and my teacher is Mrs. Frank.
Good job, guys. So let's go ahead and turn around, look at the flag. Our leaders, good by.
United States of America, and to the God who stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Coach Beckwith. Hi, it's Union with a couple of the captains for the Eastports, their second year having our Eastports game and their second year winning state championships.
Hello, my name is Mason Henderson. I am like the co-team leader of the 419. I, this is our, I believe, our second season, so we haven't even started a year. Um, what I like about this program, it's very nice here. Everybody's together, no one's like really arguing with each other, make sure about that. And I've had it last. I've made friends with this program, and I love, obviously love winning state championships, and so it's fun.
I'm Brad Moise, and I'm also co-leader. And this is my second year too, playing Eastports, and I've been playing the game for like five plus years. And I always thank my college teachers for all the support and stuff, and making this all happen.
Coach Beckwith, I'm one who got the program kind of going with everything else. It's been a great season this year with the change in format for 419. It went from being two v. two v. two to being two v. three against everyone in Northwest Ohio. And so there were 32 teams altogether, and it was kind of competitive, and we went off and get number one, number two out of the 32 teams. It was awesome to see that kind of growth throughout the season and change with the style of play.
This is your second state championship?
Uh, yes. Second one, we had the spring season, the fall season, then we start competing again into January.
Great work, guys. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jessica Stollen with Diversity Union, one of the students.
I'm the faculty advisor for the Diversity Union, but that's really all I'd like to take credit for because this group exists because of students. So, um, I'll hand it over to us.
Sorry to interrupt, but I still have to come through. So I am one of the co-founders of the Diversity Union. I started very quick, Sophia Plumester, um, sorry, my name is Laura. And we basically, we started talking about how our race affected our experience here at Vermillion Local Schools. Being both brought up from basically elementary school, we both had very like unique experience to the other students. Just growing up, looking different from the other students, we obviously couldn't hide the fact that she was mixed and I'm Asian. And there was nothing necessarily wrong about that, and we weren't always complaining, especially like with our, like, we haven't had a lack of, we haven't had necessarily any problem, like, issues. Most of the issues have just been very, like, domestic. So there hasn't, uh, it wasn't necessarily just a me and her complaining about Vermillion, but we did want to discuss how we might have felt different from the other students and how we, how we might have been feeling that we're getting treated differently by the other students. This obviously wasn't out of the student's purpose, but just how they were raised and they were not necessarily treated. They were not necessarily raised how we were with our parents. We both had our parents, and so we both kind of got that glimpse into how white people might view different people of color. And so it was very interesting to see how we could start tackling the idea of including everybody and just creating a more tolerant environment in the school. So that was kind of our mission statement, hopefully, of just starting this conversation about race at Vermillion High School, and not necessarily providing us, but bringing us together more, and how our differences make us stronger.
I'm Lily Lewis, and I was one of the first, like, people, members who trained. And, um, like our first few meetings that we had, we mostly talked about instances that affected, such as just like people in front of you and just like talking about it. And I know as myself, like, and some of the other minorities, it isn't always easy to talk about discrimination that we go through with like your other peers and friends because they don't always know exactly how you feel, because they might feel a little bit hurt way compared to someone. And so talking about the instances made me feel more comfortable, or standing up, helped me, or people feel more comfortable talking about issues, because I knew I wasn't going to be alone for this, because talking to them helped me in the future, talk to other people about the instances, and like say something to me, so that I could educate them more, so that they learn, like, that it's better not to say certain things than they do say others.
Hi, I'm Olivia Varios. I've been in Diversity Union for a while now as well. We have kind of a few ideas, um, of handy, I think, in the future. So one is a cultural food festival, which is different groups, different students that we have at the schools. We also have ideas of bringing speakers in, like motivational speakers, to talk to the school if possible. And then also, we're thinking about reading inclusive and diverse folks at the LMG or the middle school.
So this is what we were looking forward to. As for what we have done so far, we've done a T-shirt sale, which I think is, I think it's T-shirts, which we designed. Is this Mr. Walter? Mr. Walter said that he was able to help design these T-shirts and wear them, which was really kind of, because he didn't ask it, he just kind of volunteered, so he's very sweet.
Student Council is our biggest financial supporter.
Oh, yeah. Student Council is like our back burner. Um, oh, yeah, the buttons we've done, they, Olivia Varios and her friends have been coming in, like, every day to make buttons, and so we were planning on selling them when we do our cultural food gig. Uh, and so they're just like little buttons, like I said, like beverage speaking, or just like little, like inspirational books and stuff. Um, we've also done the Unity Day, which was October 12th. Uh, you can see over there, there's like a tree with like, a bunch of like colors and stuff. And basically, we kind of grow on the leaves, what we are, what makes us like unique or proud of ourselves, and how that kind of fits into the whole Vermillion and fact that has a whole. And so we will try to have, and I, um, thank you guys for listening, and we have so much more plans in the future, so I hope you guys are able to see that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the public participation on agenda items only. Each participant is allowed three minutes to speed, and time allotted time, public participation is very brief. Uh, one signed up, John Gabriel.
Like I said, I'm John Gabriel with Race Community Kitchen, and I just wanted to stop and comment because we have people who have donated, Race Community Kitchen, of course, our mission is to feed people in our community, especially those in need. So tonight, we're here to partner with the Vermillion School System on behalf of donors, some big donors such as Grace Methodist Church, the Mission Committee, and the Zanglins, and a lot of smaller donations even that have contributed to this, too many for us really. But tonight, we're here to donate funding for students who have fallen behind in long periods, to bring everybody up to speed, and that was pretty much just the reason I wanted to stop. I would say I appreciate the job you folks do, and that we are more than excited to partner with you in helping anybody who is in need of meal or any kind of food crisis. And I thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, well, move on to item eight, the superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
Yeah, so I wanted to share with you my entry plan report. I finally completed the interviews. I went through and identified where there was a lot of consensus. So as you know, the entry plan, I talked about this when you guys interviewed me, I said if I get the job, I will start my work with an entry plan, and that entry plan will involve me interviewing somewhere between 25 and 40 stakeholders, and that I will ask them all the same questions, and those questions will be designed to help me learn about the district, what people like about the district, what they want to see continue, what they want to see changed in the near term, in the long term. And so we have the results back from those interviews. And I just want to share with you, I don't, I did, I asked each of the interviewees, and these interviewees are parents, they're staff members, they're students, all the board members were interviewed, so it was a good cross-section of our, of our stakeholders. And I asked them all the exact same 14 questions, because that's the only way you can see if there's consensus. So I went through and coded all those interviews afterwards, and what I want to share with you tonight, for the record, is what, what folks said that they wanted to see happen in our school district. So I think it's really important, because this is our stakeholder saying, this is what's working, this is what's not working, and this is what we'd like to see happen in the future. So stakeholders said that Vermillion Local Schools has an excellent faculty and staff who genuinely care about the students and strive for their success. There are strong, strong positive relationships between staff and students, amongst staff, and between labor and administration, and the district has a positive and welcoming atmosphere, and the community loves and supports the school district. And this sentiment was virtually unanimous. Almost every single person that I interviewed said something like that. And obviously, that's really positive, and it's significant for the district that we have that, that perspective of, you know, that our stakeholders have that perspective of our employees. And so with a caring staff that wants to do what's best for students and families, a supportive community, and a clear vision, I think the sky's the limit regarding what can be achieved in the Vermillion Local Schools. Stakeholders said that Vermillion Local Schools needs strong instructional and organizational leadership that creates a focus on academics with curriculum and instructional modernization to produce improved student achievement outcomes for all students. Stakeholders also want improved communication from the district and accountability for all. As you know, our principals are currently leading the curriculum mapping process with their teachers. Once the curriculum is mapped, it'll be aligned horizontally across grade levels to Ohio's learning standards, and then vertically aligned between grade levels, then ensuring that all teachers are teaching their grade level and subject area standards is the first step in instructional leadership. Once we have an aligned curriculum, we can focus intently on improving instruction and assessment practices. We also trained all faculty in grades K-7 in the use of MAP assessments. These assessments were already in place in the district, but there hadn't been any training for a number of years, and we wanted to make sure that people were up to speed and were able to use the data that comes back from the MAP assessments with our students, because we get that data back very rapidly after students are assessed. And it's really easy to, if you understand the data, it's really easy to use it to guide your instruction and help individual students. So, um, so we trained the staff in that. You know, valid, reliable assessment data is critical to measuring the degree to which we are teaching an aligned curriculum and regularly measuring the degree to which we are helping students learn and grow annually and longitudinally. This data is also critical to informing decisions about curriculum material selection and instructional practices. Our fall MAP data reveals that roughly half of our elementary students are not reading or doing math on grade level relative to millions of their peers nationwide, which is what MAP data tells us. It's a nationally known reference assessment. And as Mr. Weaver explained last month, when he, when he talked about our MAP data and he shared our MAP data, you know, this is, this is mostly due to the pandemic, obviously. If you look at test scores across the nation, it's, we're, we're seeing the same thing. A lot of students, when they were in kindergarten, first and second grade, they're, they're learning to read, and we sent them home the last grading period of, of those years, and, and then the next year, they stayed home, and you don't learn to read at home usually. You know, most parents are not adept at teaching young children to read. So really, this is a national problem. This is not just a Vermillion Local Schools problem. But we know it is a challenge here, and we have, we have to do something about it. As you know, we had almost a half a million dollars in Ezra Dollars earmarked for pandemic learning loss recovery. So those dollars had to be spent for learning loss recovery. And so we know that the best way to do, the best way to help kids learn to read is give them really good instruction from high-quality teachers who know how to teach reading to young children, and that's what we're going to do. So we're hiring four teachers, and they'll be shared across grades K-5. They'll start in January. Actually, we've been doing the interviews the last few weeks, and we'll be ready to identify some, some of the folks that we want to hire here soon. We'll be recommending those folks to the board in January, but we'll be getting them started as soon as we get back for the second semester. And why? Because we know that the only way to help kids who are behind in their reading achievement is to provide them with additional focused and intense reading instruction, either one-on-one or in very small groups of four or less, and that's what, that's what we're going to do in those grade levels. Regarding improved communication, as a school administrator, I don't think I've ever asked stakeholders what they, that we could do better as a school when communication wasn't identified as something that we could improve upon. And that's because doing communication well in large, complex organizations like schools and school districts is very challenging, and we can always do it better. Each of our building principals has created a Principal's Advisory Council. We call it PAC, consisting of 10 to 15 parents with whom they are meeting quarterly to share what's happening in their buildings, instructionally and organizationally, and listen to the parents' feedback about their and their child's experiences in the schools, and to respond to their questions and concerns. And I'll be creating a similar type of group for the district called the District Advisory Council. That'll be a group of stakeholders with a similar structure and for similar purposes. And we will continuously strive to modernize and improve the effectiveness of our communication district-wide and in our buildings. Holding everyone accountable is a strong theme among our stakeholders. They want everyone to be expected to do their jobs and to be held to a consistently high level of performance. I truly believe this starts and is maintained at the top, meaning with me. I have to consistently communicate my performance expectations for all employees, and my expectation that all employees are regularly evaluated and that the evaluations are relevant and rigorous, and that our evaluators are skilled at leading, coaching, mentoring, and growing all the employees in their charge. I'll review all of our evaluation processes, identify areas for improvement, and then implement One of the questions I ask our stakeholders is, are, are we meeting the needs of all of our students? And if we're not, then what groups of students are, are we not meeting their needs? And there was three different groups of students, four different groups of students that were identified in this question across the folks that I interviewed. One was, one group was struggling students that are, that are struggling academically, both typical students and students with disabilities. In many cases, these are students who did not learn to read at grade level. We have to get 90% of our students reading on grade level by the end of third grade, otherwise they have a 74% chance of never reading on grade level. And yet, 80% of the work that we will ask them to do in our schools is literacy-based. So if you're in school, and you, 80% of the time, you can't do what you're being asked to do, then you're going to cause trouble. You're going to, there's going to be discipline issues, there's going to be a lot of frustration on the part of both students and parents and families. And so we've got to get kids reading on grade level, because it solves a whole lot of our other problems that come, come along without, with, with kids who don't read on grade level. We also have to commit to helping the students beyond third grade who never learned to read, whether learning disabled or not, read on grade level. Reading's not just an academic skill, it's a survival skill. It's worth mentioning that nationally, about, only about 50% of third graders read at grade level by the end of third grade. So this is not just a challenge in, in the Vermillion Local Schools. And that, that number of 50% has been true for a really long time. I think if you ask the average parent, they would tell you that probably, they thought that probably 90% of kids read on grade level. That's just not the case. So yeah, we, we can do that, that's possible. We can get 90% of our kids reading on grade level, we just have to, to put the plan in place and commit to doing it. Another group was the non-college track, non-vocational track students. This was, um, this was something that was mentioned by just about everybody. They're really concerned about the students who are not going to college. They feel like we do a really good job with the students that are preparing to go to college. And we don't do such a good job with those students who've said, I'm not going to college, or I'm not going to be able to go to college, or I want to go into a vocational track. And I think, you know, the big challenge there is, we have a wonderful vocational school, E-Hovey. I've been there several times now already, super impressed with it, impressed with their staff, impressed with their leadership. But I know from my experience as a school administrator in the last 20 years, that there's a group of kids in every class that will not leave their high school. They will not leave here and go to a vocational school, even though they know they're not going to go to college. That's the group of kids that, that these folks were talking about, that they're worried about, that, that are leaving here, even with a high school diploma, but not with really any skills to offer to an employer. And they want to know what we can do about that. So we have to take a look at that. And, you know, the, the state of Ohio, for the last, I would say, at least 20 years, has, has had the notion, the, the people that are leading at the state level, that every kid's going to go to college. And if you look at how high schools are, are organized now, and you look at the assessments that are given, the end-to-course tests, you can see that we, the state wants to funnel every kid to college. We all know every kid's not going to college. In the state of Ohio, 28% of the population has a four-year college degree, 28% in two, in 2022. Okay? So not even a third. So we know that every kid's not going to college. And guess what? They don't need to. There's a lot of really good jobs in our economy, and there's being, more of them being created all the time, and you don't have to go to college. So we've got to take a really close look at what we're doing and what we can do to help those kids leave here with something to offer to employers so they can, they can be employable. All right. Students who can't read or are not reading at grade level, that was mentioned very specifically. It surprised me a little bit that, that that was mentioned so frequently by stakeholders of all varieties, not just staff members, but, but our parents are concerned about that, really concerned about that. So I just said, refer to my explanation under A above, we've got to get 90% of our kids reading on grade level at the end of third grade. The other one, the fourth group, was students with social, emotional needs. Again, almost unanimous that people are concerned about our, our students and their mental health and their well-being. So this is another where, area where we, we never will be able to do enough, because the need is so widespread and variable, yet the district has made a significant and unique investment. And I want everybody to understand this, a significant and unique investment in employing two full-time mental health therapists who are working extremely hard to meet the needs of our students who are struggling socially and emotionally. I don't know of another school district of any size that has two full-time mental health therapists. So that's a huge kudos to all of you for having the foresight to, to do that. And I can tell you right now, they are booked. They're booked solid, you know, and kids waiting to get in. Part of this is a communication issue, because when stakeholders mentioned this as a concern, and many of them did, and I asked them if they knew that we had just recently employed two full-time mental health therapists, none of them, including some of our own staff members, were aware of it. So the first mental health therapist was hired last January, so was here for half of the school year last year. I interviewed staff members who didn't know that we had a mental health therapist on staff last year. And then we hired another one in the fall. You hired another one in the fall, so now we have two. So we have to make, and I think now that, that word is getting out. Certainly, you know, if you remember Rennie Jeffers, who's one of the people that I interviewed, she's a journalist, she actually did a story, because she didn't know, and, and she had concerns about it, and so she wanted to do an interview to make sure that people were aware that we were offering that to our, our students. So that's a, that's a huge kudos to this board and, and the forward thinking of, of the board and the administration to, to do that. And that's never going to, that's not going to be enough. We have to, we're going to need staff training to, to make sure our staff, because the first line of defense really is our teachers. They're the ones that, that spend the most time with our students, they're the ones who know them the best, but also our guidance counselors. And so we have to find ways that, you know, we have to help all of our staff members know how to help our kids with these issues as, as much as possible. And that's, that's a challenge, but we can do it. Number four, stakeholders said that Vermillion Local Schools needs a focus on safety and security, including training and technology. As most of our stakeholders should now be aware, I consider safety and security to be job one in schools, and I've communicated that belief to stakeholders in various ways. We've also, from day one this school year, undertaken several safety and security initiatives. We trained all staff in active shooter response. We modernized the lockdown protocols, the leveled lockdowns. We recently conducted a professional district-wide vulnerability assessment through Educator's School Safety Network, a, a network of, of professional school safety folks who come in and actually take a, an in-depth look at our, our facilities and make sure that we are doing things that keep the building safe and secure, the results of which were presented to our administrative team, and the admins were instructed to resolve all the identified safety and security issues within their scope of control. The Director of Operations, John Parsons, and the custodial maintenance staff are assisting them in that effort. Our administrators and their building safety team representatives will receive safety team training on December 14th. Our custodial and maintenance staff members will receive after-hours school facility safety and security training with ESSN on December 19th. We're replacing all doorknobs on SMS and VHS over the winter break due to the age and poor functioning. We were recently notified that we will receive the Ohio K-12 School Safety Grant maximum allocation of $300,000, and I've communicated to staff and parents our plans to install the 911 inform system, which Mr. Weaver spoke about last month, a district-wide state-of-the-art panic alarm system that'll be in each of our buildings. And during the 2022-23 school year, we will conduct threat assessment team training with ESSN. We've had some staff initially trained in threat assessment, but we need to make sure that we are implementing that with fidelity and that it's effective, because it's a really excellent process if you know how to implement it and when to implement it. And then finally, stakeholders said that VLS needs significant improvements to its facilities and grounds, and its facilities and grounds, and that facilities and grounds need to be maintained to a consistently high level. This is another area in which our stakeholders were nearly unanimous in their concern. They compare our district schools and campus to others that they visit on occasion, and they are concerned that the district has lost its pride with respect to its facilities and grounds. In fact, one stakeholder, when asked what she expected of me as a superintendent, stated specifically, bring back, bring back the pride in our schools. In August, I established monthly facility meetings at each building with the head principal, the head custodian, the Director of Operations, John Parsons, Justin, our treasurer here, and myself, to discuss any and all facility-related issues. As a result, we've had, we have what is essentially a facility and grounds needs assessment. John Parsons is working diligently to get cost estimates for the identified issues, so that we can then prioritize those projects based on need and cost. And I'll be presenting that information to the board in the near future. So, that's the entry plan. I think it provides us with a lot of guidance and a lot of work, but it helps us focus our work as well going forward. So, this will sort of be our bible for a while, until we get these things done. Any questions?
No, just really appreciate all this feedback. That's a, that is a lot in a short period of time that you've been here, so I really appreciate the effort that went into it. I think it's going to really help kind of shape your vision for the district, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, item number nine, the treasurer's recommendations. Mr. Klingstrom.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for November 2022, and that is attachment to A.
I'll move.
Who was that?
Mr. Johnston.
All right, first, we'll take a look at the general funds, and we'll look at revenue by month. So, through the month of November, the district has received ten point seven million in general fund revenue compared to ten point seven million at this time last year, and ten point seven million in fiscal year twenty-one. Our revenue always stays pretty consistent, with the exceptions of a few delinquencies here and there, but our general fund revenue is always fairly consistent. That's, it'll continue to be pretty close as we move throughout the rest of the year. So, you know, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to our food service fund, through the month of November, the district has received two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in food service revenue compared to three hundred and ten thousand at this time last year, and a hundred and eight thousand in fiscal year twenty-one. Despite food service not being one hundred percent subsidized by the government like it was last year, our revenue has been higher than I forecasted. So, that's a good thing, and it means we have higher participation. The food that we're providing, students are liking more and buying more of it, and so that's a good sign. Lastly, we'll take a look at all funds on the revenue side. Through the month of November, we've received eleven point seven million in all funds compared to eleven point five at this time last year, and eleven point seven again in fiscal year twenty-one. So, again, much like the general fund, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at the general fund first. Through the month of November, the district has expended twelve point three million from the general fund compared to ten point seven at this time last year, and eleven point one in fiscal year twenty-one. So, a couple of things have happened, you know, so far this year, the district has spent one million more in salaries than it did the previous year. Now, part of that increase was moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay, as well as negotiated increases. So, when we were on a bi-monthly pay, twice a year, we would have a month where we would have three paychecks come through. Those haven't hit yet, at least in these records. So, that number will start shrinking down a little bit, but it still will be higher than it was last year. Likewise, our retirement and our insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional two hundred and one thousand more this year than the previous year. Also, purchase services, so like our utilities, you know, diesel fuel, our contractors that we need to come out and have work done, they've cost an extra hundred and three thousand compared to, compared to last year. And then lastly, we purchased, last February, we actually purchased two buses. Those should be delivered within the next thirty days, but that wasn't on last year's expenditures, they're on this year's expenditures for two hundred thousand dollars. So, when you add all that up, the district has spent one point six million more this year than the previous year. The salaries will still be a little bit more, but we'll start gaining a little bit more ground as those three pay months hit that we only have two pays coming through now. Moving on to food service, through the month of November, we've expended three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars compared to three hundred and thirty-three thousand at this time last year, and two hundred and forty-one thousand in fiscal year twenty-one. Again, this is going to be your negotiated salary increases and just the cost of food are the main drivers in this. The cost of food has gone significantly up, and as such, so are expenditures. Through the month of November, this is all funds, the district has expended fourteen point one million compared to eleven point six at this time last year, and eleven point eight in fiscal year twenty-one. So, in general, the district is on pace to spend more than its historical average, and it's for reasons really mentioned in that general fund side. And then lastly, we'll take a look at cash. Through the month of November, we have a total of seventeen point two million in cash compared to seventeen point nine million at this time last year, and fifteen point seven million in fiscal year twenty-one. On the food service side, through the month of November, we have a total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand in cash compared to a hundred and fifty-seven thousand at this time last year, and thirty-nine thousand in fiscal year twenty-one. And then when we combine all of our funds together, through the month of November, the district has a total of twenty-nine, or twenty-one point nine million in cash compared to twenty-one point four million at this time last year, and nineteen point four million in fiscal year twenty-one. On the investment side, again, things are starting to look better on the investments. Through the month of November, we've earned a total of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents on interest compared to sixty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents at this time last year. So far this year, we've earned an extra thirty-four thousand dollars or fifty-six percent more in interest compared to last year. Any questions?
Nope.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero. Number two, approve the donation of thirty dollars from Kzip Services and Repairs LLC to Model UN.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero. Number three, approve the donation of five thousand dollars from Grace Community Church to help with students' school lunch debt.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
That's a great donation.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Mr. Gabriel was here.
Was he? I missed him.
I think it's great to have a supporter from the community do that for the kids who can't keep up with lunch debt or families that can't keep up with it.
It's incredible, yeah.
All right, call the roll.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero. And number four, recommend a resolution to approve the payment of sixty-eight thousand and one hundred and ninety dollars to Harness Health for Nursing Services for fiscal year twenty-two.
I'll move. I'll second.
Questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero. Thank you.
All right, item ten is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the board approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board in adoption of the consent agenda means all items are approved by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately as listed.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or any things removed? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero.
Item twelve are the dates and locations of upcoming meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, twelve-fifty Sanford Street, Vermillion, Ohio, unless otherwise noted. Tax budget on Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at five forty. The organizational meeting, Monday, I'm sorry, it's January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at five forty-five. A regular meeting, Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P.M. Regular meeting, Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P.M. And Monday, regular meeting, Monday, January, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P.M. Item thirteen is public participation. The board president reserves the right to time limit. Public participation section of the Board of Education Agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board in their complaints or compliments, concerns, and/or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the board will remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful to the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should first address the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator.